Okay, ready?
[laughing]
All right.
I look like a jacket box.
Let's call the meeting to order. The Board of Supervisors, Warminster Township for Tuesday, January 3rd, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one second for all our servicemen and civilians serving overseas. Okay, thank you very much. All right, welcome everyone. Big night. It's our reorganization. Let me see here, we're following the agenda. Public comment on agenda items only. Anybody have any comments? Start?
Mr. President?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry. I will. So I do have one announcement. We did have executive session to go over litigation, personnel issues. And that's about it. Okay, sorry. Anyone else have any comments before we start?
I have no comments.
Okay. No comments from the public. Why don't we get started? We'll start with election of officers. First is election of Chair. Do we have a nomination?
I would like to nominate Mr. Ken Hayes for Chair.
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Okay, any questions or comments? Questions or comments from the public? Okay, I guess we'll call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Thank you, and I'm honored again to serve as Chair of the Board. Thank you very much, and thanks to the residents.
I'll keep you to it.
[laughing] I've always, everyone does all the time.
Once again, I want to offer my condolences.
Yes, and again, I'll accept them. [laughing] All right, so for Vice Chair, do we have a nomination for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Kathy Frescatore.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any other nominations? Okay, being none, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Congratulations Kathy, another year.
Oh yeah.
All right, let's move on to Treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Mark McKee.
I'll second.
Okay, any other nominations? All right, let's call, any questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh.
Thank you, both fellow Board members. Responsibility.
We'll hold you to that too.
No problem.
[laughing] All right, Assistant Treasurer, I would like to nominate John Rainey. He's our Financial Director, and I think he would be the perfect fit for this.
I'll second that, Chairman, for Chair.
Okay. Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
And Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, Township Secretary.
I would like to nominate Judy Hoover.
I'll second.
Okay, any other nominations? If not, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Assistant Township Secretary.
How about if we give that to Tom? I'd like to nominate Tom Scott.
I'll second that. [laughing] You're quite welcome. [laughing] Any other nominations? Okay, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Five oh. Thank you. Township Solicitor, I would like to appoint Flagler and Associates as our Solicitor.
I'd like to second.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
And the Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Congratulations, Mr. Flagler.
We thank the Board for your continued confidence in us, and we look forward to a great year. Thank you.
You're welcome.
You're welcome.
Alternate Counsel, I'd like to nominate Bob Repko.
I'd like to second that.
Any other nominations? That's our Conflict Counsel, Flagler Associates has a conflict.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Sorry.
Robert Repko.
Robert Repko, yes. Any other nominations? Okay. Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I have to vote no on that one, only because I've made it a practice since I've been on this Board, not to vote for someone that I've never met.
Right.
And I still to this day haven't met Mr. Repko. I can't, I can't in good conscience vote for someone that I've never met.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not questioning his capabilities.
No, I understand. Yeah, so Chair votes aye. Was it four one?
Aye.
Four one. Four one? That's fine, I don't know him.
Do you vote up or down? Yes or no?
Yes, that's fine, that's just your judgment.
Four one.
Aw.
We haven't used him because there's never been a conflict.
I've never met him.
Right, that's right, exactly. Just like we never met our environmental council.
Maybe call him, meet him for breakfast or something.
I will, we will.
Did he send cookies?
I don't think so. We didn't get cookies either.
The answer is that because we don't represent developers, we have very few conflicts. Occasionally, you want to sue one of our clients or something, had that a couple places, that's a conflict.
Now, in the past, we've had to use conflict councils.
Yeah.
So that's the reason why you haven't, because we don't do any land development.
I look forward to meeting, I'm sure.
Yeah, we'll make sure we set that up, Mark. I think that's the second year in a row you did that.
Third.
Third? [laughing]
He's right, you're right.
We will invite him in to meet everyone.
He hasn't been here for three years.
Right.
All right. So our Labor Counsel, I'd like to nominate Kurt Hefner.
I'll second it.
Okay, any questions or comments? Questions from the public? Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. I don't believe we need Environmental Counsel right now, because we haven't used the one we had for quite a long time, and I think we should, quite honestly, we'll use an Environmental Counsel when we need it, and we'll make sure it's a local company. There's plenty of reputable law firms in Pennsylvania.
Well, do we need to table that agenda item or no?
Don't even think, do we need to table that?
I mean, not really. You're just not going to.
We're just not going to fill it.
Okay, that's right.
All right.
If it needs to be filled later on in the year.
Because there's another guy that I've never met.
Anytime.
There you go, couldn't pick him out of a lineup.
That's right, couldn't pick him out of a lineup, right.
Anytime you need Labor, Environmental Counsel, you just make a motion to hire Environmental Counsel.
Right.
As you choose.
And there's plenty of good ones right here in Pennsylvania.
We love Barry, but he was expensive.
Yeah, very expensive.
Yes.
And I think you're the only one that met him.
Yeah.
Or maybe Kathy, I don't know.
I've met him once.
You met him once?
Once, yes.
All right, Township Engineer.
I'd like to nominate Craig, Craig Kennard from Gilmore and Associates.
And I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, I'd like to. Yeah, let's be clear.
I'm sorry.
Craig, Gilmore and.
You're hiring Gilmore and Associates as the Township Engineer.
Okay.
That's your motion.
That's my motion.
And just to make this easy, I'm just going to, I don't know how we could, I would like to make that for all engineering, including traffic and planning. Can we do that?
I have no issue with that.
Okay.
We have different people that are doing it, it's just.
Well, they're all part of Gilmore and Associates.
Whatever you guys decide. Yes, I'm.
Okay.
Is there any objection from the Board?
I have no objection.
I'm trying to save some time.
Yes, I am.
Save some time and consolidate some bills.
Mine's well, okay.
Sorry. Well, we didn't call a question yet. So it's going to be, all engineering services will be completed by Gilmore and Associates. Is that the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, and seconded? Okay, any questions other than the questions from the Board?
Yes, it says.
Planning.
Planning, traffic engineering.
Traffic.
All engineering.
All engineering services for the township. All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh.
I'd like to thank the Board for their continued support, and on all appointments tonight, I look forward to a great 2023.
Janice was just telling me earlier how she's looking forward to zipping right down street road, no interruption. Didn't you tell me that earlier?
I'll be right behind her.
Who said that?
I do have some.
She's not the first one.
Yeah, traffic tonight was nuts on street roads, so whatever you can do, that would be appreciated.
Good luck.
There's some things I can fix.
That's a state highway, that's a tough one.
I know.
All right.
I'll go to Harrisburg.
That takes care of all our professionals and Board positions. Now we can go to the Boards and Advisory Committees.
We didn't do Township Planning.
Yes, we did.
Yes, that's under.
Gilmore. That'll be Judy Stern-Golstein.
Okay.
All right, so Vacancy Board, I would like to nominate Bart Patrick.
I'll second that.
Okay, any other nominations? All right, any questions? Let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you. Zoning Hearing Board.
I'd like to nominate Walt Krzanowski.
Is that for the voting member?
No.
No, no, no.
No. For the voting member, I'll nominate Bob Welsh.
I'd like to second that.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mark, you second it.
We're going to fight over him.
Fight over your second, Bob. You're a popular guy.
Wow. Take it outside.
All right, any other questions or comments? All right, let's call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh.
Congratulations, Bob.
Congratulations, Bob. All right, now, Alternate Member.
I'd like to.
I'll nominate Walt Krzanowski.
I'll second.
Did he put a letter in?
Yes.
Yes. I think we got it late.
It came in a couple days ago.
Yeah.
Because it's not on my sheet.
I think he called it zoning hearing appeals or something like that.
Oh, I thought he was referencing construction appeals.
No. Well, that was another, that was another one he put in as well.
I gotta look through my email, frankly, I don't remember seeing it.
Yeah, it's there. Do we have all the, where's Jill? Oh, there she is. Is that, is all the, they're all in here, right?
All the letters that were received, even the later ones are in there.
Okay, I did see it in my inbox, Mark.
So we did get one, Jill? Jill?
We did.
We did, yeah.
I believe it.
See, I was listed.
Not that I don't believe Mr. Hayes, but I, I believe him, I believe him.
Well, I'll second it.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Comments? All right, should we call a question? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, is there a nomination for the other alternate?
Yes, I'd like to nominate Mary McGee.
For zoning hearing? She's already on there, isn't she?
We got a letter from her.
We just got a letter from her.
She's good till 2024 as alternate.
Oh, so there's only one other that we got a letter from. I'll nominate Shelley Islandberg. We only got a letter from one other person.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Right?
Sorry about that.
I think Wayne put one in too.
But he's.
He's on, yeah.
Yeah.
He should have. Well, it's okay.
Okay. All right, so Charlie, what's his last name?
Shelley.
Oh, Shelley Islandberg.
Yeah, Shelley. Congratulations, Shelley.
She's in the room.
Yeah, yeah.
She's in the house, she's in the house.
Lot of stuff going on in my head.
All right, so I'll nominate Shelley or you nominate?
I already did.
You did, I'll second it.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Any questions or comments? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Congratulations, Shelley. All right. Municipal Authority Board Member.
I'd like to nominate Frank Feinberg.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh.
Congratulations, Frank.
All right, Planning Commission, one position, I'd like to nominate Wayne McCullough.
I'll second it.
I'll third that.
Okay.
Fight over Wayne here too.
Any questions or comments from the Board, from the public? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you, Wayne, for all your years of service. You got a few more coming.
Frank, you're about thirty minutes, thirty seconds too late, Frank.
Yeah, a little late, Frank. You're already on the municipal authority. Sorry.
We'd have waited if we knew you were coming.
All right, Planning Commission, Alternate Member, I'd like to nominate John Sinari.
I'll second that.
Okay. Any questions, comments? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, Library Board.
I'd like to nominate Tony Sadowski.
I'll second that.
Can we do them both at the same time?
Yes.
Kyle Crossen, I'd like to nominate Kyle Crossen.
Second.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Just say the names again.
Tony Sadowski and Kyle Crossen.
Kyle Crossen. All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Thank you, I think Kyle has a degree in library sciences, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that'd be a nice addition to the Board. Okay, Construction Board of Appeals. I think we have Nick Hosgood, I'd like to make a motion to. Did he put a letter in? I thought, I saw the letter.
Yes, there's a letter.
Yeah, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second. Judy, whoever.
Whoever.
Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. And I believe, let me look at the. All right, we're good. Thank you. Okay, Golf Advisory Committee.
Can I do, like, can I do three names at once?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to nominate for the two-year term Fran Foley, Brian Fenner, and Tina Tokowski. I'm sorry, yes, is it those three?
Larry McHugh.
Thought it was Larry McHugh.
Okay.
Tina stays on. I don't know.
Okay, I got it right, I got it right already. Okay, Fran Foley, Larry McHugh, and Tina Tokowski. I think I pronounced that correctly.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Okay, sorry about that, Mr. Chair.
Okay, there was a second. Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, so Citizen Advisor, there says there's two positions, but I don't believe there's any limit to Citizen Advisors.
I don't believe there is either, Mr. Chairman, and to me, the more the merrier.
More the merrier.
So I'd like to nominate three, David Martin, Eileen Lero, and Dalton.
George?
George.
Is that it?
What about Brian Fenner? Is it Brian Fenner?
The one, Mark, about Larry, no, we have him on.
Brian Fenner?
Brian Fenner, that's the one, yeah.
David Martin, Eileen Lero, and Dalton George.
Okay.
Got it.
I'll second that. Okay. Any questions or comments? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, Environmental Advisory Council, I'd like to nominate John McGee.
Second.
Okay, questions or comments? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Chairperson for the Environmental Advisory Council.
I'd like to nominate John McGee.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. Moving on, Parks and Rec, another loaded board.
I've got that all.
Got it all figured out?
Yeah, want me to figure it, want me to do it?
Yeah, go ahead, go right ahead.
My motion for the two-year term, I'd like to nominate Katie Quinnbach and Arlene Baker.
Okay, any seconds?
Second, that's for Citizen Advisory Committee.
No, it's for members.
Of course, it's for members.
That's for voting members.
Two members, okay.
Okay.
All right, and then I.
Well, let's just go through.
Take action on the voting members.
Yeah, let's take action on this one. All right. Excuse me, call the question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right, Citizen Advisors, there's a pile of them.
Yes, I'd like to nominate Erica McKee, Pat Boyle, Jane Taylor, Patty Crossen, and Jeff Droulis.
Forgot Tony Sadowski.
Well, he's, he applied on more than one board.
Well, he could be on.
He could be on this one too, if he wants.
Jane Taylor.
I said Jane Taylor.
Well, let's make a motion, and I'll give the discussion point. I'll, I'll second that cut.
Okay, and what, Tony? Yes.
And the discussion point is this, that especially with Park and Rec, all the people that are Citizen Advisors that come to the meeting, they all volunteer for all the events that go on.
They do.
Correct.
For Warminster Day and Yard Sale Day, so the more the merrier. I know it's like, seems like a loaded board. Not everybody shows up at every meeting.
It's a lot of work, too.
But these are people that volunteer for.
Yes.
Yes.
For every event, and for full disclosure, I'd have to vote for my wife, or I'll be sleeping on the couch tonight. We don't, we don't want to do that over the holidays.
I don't want to ruin the couch.
All right, so, did you get all the names?
Did you guys get all the names?
I got, I got Erica, I got Pat, I got Jane, I got Tony.
Patty Crossen.
Patty.
Not Tony.
Pat Boyle, Jane Taylor, Jeff Droulis, Patty Crossen, and who did I miss?
Erica.
Erica.
Erica, and wasn't there one more I missed? Tony Sadowski as well, right?
He said we could put Tony on there too, if he wanted to.
Was there a John also, did you say?
Jane?
Or James?
Jane, Jane Taylor, J-A-Y-N-E.
Was it a John, it was a Jane?
Jane. Yeah.
Jane.
So Tony, yes.
Yeah. Okay, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye. Motion carries five oh. All right. So we're adding to the volunteers, and by the way, we encourage everybody to volunteer with the Parks and Rec for all their functions.
Yeah, the board.
All right. Pension Investment Advisory Committee, I'd like to nominate John Priolius.
I'll second it.
Third, fourth, fifth.
Okay. Let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye.
Congratulations, John.
John, another year. All right. It says there's two members up. Chris Burnick respectfully declined because he doesn't have the time, so...
Let's open, if someone in the public would like to put a letter in, we can always appoint him later.
Exactly.
We have a spot open.
All right. Yeah, the motion to appoint the Finance Director of the Pension Investment Advisory Committee.
Nominate John Ramey.
Right, he's our Finance Director.
He's the guy. I'll second.
Okay. Let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, five oh. All right. Pension Investment Advisory Committee, three union members. We have John Dinargo, right?
John Dinargo from the PVA.
Dinargo, Gene.
Gene Astarito from ASME.
And Ann, right?
And Ann Duffy from...
Ann, Ann's gonna come back.
She did. I spoke to her the other day, she said she'd like to come back.
Because we're doing the noon meetings now that she can make it.
Right. Well, she was on maternity leave as well, so...
Right, good, okay.
All right, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Okay, Ben Wilson Center.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate John Panowski and Judy Hoover.
I'd like to second that.
Okay. Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, Supervisor Liaisons. If Judy's still up to it, I'd like to nominate Judy for the planning.
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Do we have to take action on these?
I don't know that we do.
They're just simple...
It does ask for a vote.
Really?
Yeah.
Do we have to take action on these?
No, okay.
You can just appoint.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a consensus of the board.
Right.
You can just appoint whoever...
So we can skip this whole thing?
Yeah, just who's taking what, run down the line of...
Well, let's run it down.
Okay.
All right, so we have... Where am I? I got lost here. I was throwing this away. All right, Judy, for the Planning Commission. I guess I'll stay with zoning hearing.
Municipal Authority, I'd like to do that.
Kathy for the Municipal Authority, the library is Judy?
I'd like Janice to be the Supervisor Liaison to the Environmental Advisory Council, if you'd like to do that.
Sure, I can do that.
Okay, all right. Mark, you want to do golf advisory?
Sure, absolutely.
I have Kathy and Mark.
Yes, Park and Rec. Can you and I do that together?
No problem.
Okay, good, thank you, thank you Judy, thank you Mark.
So there's no necess... It's not necessary for the Ben Wilson Center unless somebody else wants to be on it. Would you like to be on the Ben Wilson Center?
No, she's got it.
Well, you're already, you're already a member.
Yeah, it only calls for two, yeah.
And it says here, you're not necessary, a Board of Supervisors member is appointed as a non-voting member.
Unless you want to do it.
So...
So we can have someone else if you want.
The chance is good.
Okay. All right, Judy, can...
Yeah, she's got, she's got her hands...
It's all yours.
It's all yours, Judy.
Okay, thanks.
All right, the Pension Investment Advisory Committee, I'd like to maintain that, and I believe, Mark, you're on there as well.
Yeah, I would too.
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Well, that's, that's us.
Yeah, I got the two, yeah.
Okay. Establish the depositories, now we need to...
Univest.
All right, we have, well, it's not just Univest. It's Univest, M&amp;T Bank, TD Bank, Pliget, PNC Bank, and TD Ameritrade Trust, and US Bank, is that correct, Tom?
Sounds right to me, John.
That's right. It's everything that's listed here. All right, so I'll motion for those, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any questions or comments? Wait a minute.
First National Newtown? That's on there, that's the first one listed.
Yeah, First National Bank in Newtown.
You just didn't read it out loud.
I thought it, right?
It's okay. Why don't you slide on that, Mr. Chairman?
You made that silent.
Okay, I think we got everybody, Bobby, I think we're okay. Yeah.
Yeah, that's that first number.
It's all right here, I'll read them again. First National Bank in Newtown. Another bank's deemed necessary, which would include Univest Bank, M&amp;T Bank, TD Bank, Pennsylvania Local Government Invest Trust, which is Pliget, PNC Bank, TD Ameritrade Trust Company, and US Bank. It's about everybody, yeah.
I think we just missed Haper Federal, I think that's...
Right, yeah. So is there a second?
Mark seconded.
Oh, you did, okay, all right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, we're going to set the Treasurers bond in the amount of $2 million. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second? Okay. I think we've done this every year forever, so let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, regular scheduled public meetings. January 5th, which I believe we canceled already. January 19th, February 2nd, February 16th, March 2nd, March 16th, April 6th, and April 20th, May 4th, May 18th, June 1st, June 15th, July 6th, July 20th, August...
Are these all firsts and third Thursdays?
Firsts and thirds, yes.
Let me just say that.
August 3rd, August 7th, I'm gonna read them.
Okay.
September 7th, September 21st, October 5th, October 19th, November 2nd, November 16th, December 7th, and December 21st. Is there a motion?
Motion, second.
Second? Okay, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right. Setting and affirming the calendar year 2023, non-collective bargaining agreement, township holidays. We have them listed here, New Year's Day, Martin Luther King Day, President's Day, Good Friday, Memorial Day, Independence Day, Labor Day, Veterans Day, Thanksgiving Day, the day after Thanksgiving Day, and Christmas Day. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
Call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Township meeting policy. Is there a motion to adopt the attached policy, a meeting policy?
I'm so moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Any questions or comments on the meeting policy? All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. I would love to nominate Judy Hoover as our continued delegate to the PSAT's Educational Conference.
I'm all for that.
She loves it.
She does enjoy that.
I like it, yeah.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is that all we're for that?
Yeah, I'm all for it.
That's right. All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, five oh. All right, thank you. Now we go to new business.
Where are we picking up on the agenda here?
Consent agenda.
Uh, we have to approve the consent agenda. Where is the consent agenda?
Wait a minute, new business, what about duty tow?
Before consent agenda.
Yeah.
Uh, there is no new business, I'm sorry.
Duty tow licenses. We do have some.
Oh, we do?
Oh, wait a minute.
Back to the regular agenda now.
I'm confused on both of them too.
Hold on, I gotta move my paper around here, forgive me. I got it. Thank you, Kathy. All right. Approval of the... Now, are we doing that?
We're gonna announce, we're taking the law.
We're gonna announce.
Oh, okay, right, we're gonna remove the approval of the ASME Local 1598 Collective Bargaining Agreement for the year 2023 through 2026, okay? We don't need to vote on that, we're just gonna remove it, correct?
You're not voting on that tonight.
We're not voting, right?
Right.
Okay. Assignment of duty tow licenses per ordinance 770. Tom, I'm gonna give you the floor on that.
So a couple of months ago, the board adopted a new duty tow license ordinance, number 770, replaced the legacy one that everybody was unhappy with. So in this case, the board gets to appoint whomever wants to perform the duty tow license, you can grant it for a year, a month, for as long and as many as you want. So we had five, or six applicants, same six that we've had, I think, for the last couple of years. A to Z, Wormminster, John, what's the other one?
Robody. Wormminster Autobody.
Wormminster Autobody. Modern, Cleanse, and Mopert Brothers. All six have applied, so you, the past two would be giving all six licenses, tonight you can decide which of those six, or all of those six, or none of those six, that you want to approve.
Have, have they been, have we sent our people out to inspect their facilities?
I have not been to the facilities, I have only reviewed the applications.
Are they all in order?
They are in order.
Okay. I'm going to motion to award A to Z and Wormminster Autobody the tow licenses.
I'll second that.
Any questions or comments?
And we're just gonna go with the two then?
For now. I'm sure, we can add later?
You can add later.
Yeah, okay. Sorry.
Add, subtract, whatever you want.
Add or subtract, as we say.
Okay.
All right. Any questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, John, you're it.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay. Now we go to the consent agenda.
Well, wait.
Well, wait a minute, wait a minute, you're right, you're right.
There's more.
There's more. It's, it's almost 8:30. Consider approval of Resolution 2023-01, update to Wormminster Township fee schedule for building, plumbing, electrical, and HVAC permits. Is there a motion?
I'll move, Chairman.
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Questions or comments from the public?
Yes, what is your fee schedule?
It is right in here, Tom, you want, you want... I'll yield the floor to our Township Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yeah, we are, this resolution would amend the fee schedules for building permits, for mechanical permits, for HVAC, for plumbing permits, and for electrical permits. All of which, issuance of a permit requires the fee be paid. We would be changing the fees as currently written in a previously adopted ordinance from 2021. The rest of the fee schedule, which deals with things like subdivision land development fees, zoning hearing board fees, other sundry fees, would remain the same.
We have a copy of it. There's, there's just two numbers, you want to go through every one of them? Do you want us to go through every one? Yeah, you want a copy? Here you go. Go on, Jane. Can you pass that down? There's been some things that have been added that have never been in there before, as far as permitting? Oh wait, here's another page.
Yeah, you're missing a page.
Here's another page, sorry.
It's all gonna be posted too.
Yeah.
Nope, sure it'll all be posted.
And they'll all be posted as well.
If adopted, it'll become part of the fee schedule, and it will be, it will replace the portions of the fee schedule that now is available for the public. This will, this will become part of it.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? By the way, I guess I should mention that that's Jane Lynch, and what's your address, Jane? You should have been up here asking that question, but that's okay.
I'm sorry, what's my address?
Yes, we need, for the record, we need you to...
Now, there's a new law that you don't have to give your address, which I'm sure you know. So I live on Morrison Drive, and all this is...
Thank you.
Thank you for the information, I was just curious.
Yeah, that's fine. We, we have nothing to hide.
I'm gonna go sell my house, I want to see how much you're posting.
Just have the windows fixed, right, the concrete, I think you're okay. All right, I wasn't aware of that, when did that, when did that happen? As far as your... Yeah? Okay.
You're allowed to ask, it's just you can't stop the public comment if they refuse.
Okay. Okay, very good.
And you are, sir? What is your address? 123 Bay Street.
Good one.
All right, let's, any other questions or comments? Let's call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, now I can go to the consent agenda, right? Chomping at the bit to get here. All right. Consider approval of Resolution 2023-02, setting the police officer's contribution to the pension fund. Consider approval of Resolution 2023-03, setting the at-will employee contributions to the pension... Pension fund. Consider approval of Resolution 2023-04, setting Wormminster Township's contributions to the defined compensation pension fund. Consider approval of Resolution 2023-05, setting ASME Local 2289 WTO, or WIO as we call it, excuse me, employee contributions to the pension fund. Consider approval of Resolution 2023-06, setting ASME Local 1598, employee contributions to the pension fund. And finally, consider approval of Payment 5, final to NJS Concrete for 2022 curb ramp installation project, in the amount of $51,772. I'll ask for a motion.
So moved. I move we approve the consent agenda.
Okay. Is there a second? Any questions or comments? Everything was finished satisfactory, Craig? Okay. Any questions or comments from the public?
I'm not yet, no.
No, we're on consent agenda. All right, we'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. All right, I think you're up, Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, ask for a second to consider the approval of the supplemental bill list dated December 30th, 2022, in the amount of $947,182.16.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions or comments? All right, questions or comments from the public? All right, we'll call the question, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, Chair votes aye, motion carries five oh. Now. Non-agenda items. Come on up.
Come on, yes.
So, am I allowed to ask you your name, right?
Yeah.
So my name is Patty Crossen, so I just wanted to introduce myself. I'm on the Centennial School District School Board of Directors, and I wanted to, you know, during the reorganization, I now represent Wormminster. I know it seems, we have some that represent Southampton, I represent Wormminster, and I just wanted to let anybody know that they could reach out to me. I'll leave my email address so that you guys can have it through the school board, and every other month, or every month, I'll come over and give some updates on what's going on with the district. So if anybody has any questions, or what's going on, so your next meeting, not your next meeting, next month I'll be here with an update, you know, on everything that's going on in the district, just so everyone can be aware. If anybody has any questions, and if I can't answer, then I can bring it back to the board, and then, you know, we can get back to you. But I just thought it would be nice to introduce myself and let everyone know that I will be representing Wormminster. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes.
When's your next meeting?
My next meeting is next, yes, February 10th.
February 10th.
So if you'd like to come, it's at 7:00 at the Administration Building. January 10th. Next, yeah, next week, next Tuesday.
Okay.
So at 7:00 at the Administration Building, so feel free to come and join us.
All right, thank you very much.
I have a question for you too. Could you tell me what the COVID policy is for children who say they test positive for Coda, but COVID, but they're not running a fever? Are, I was told by a mom that they said that the child could go to school as long as they were wearing a mask, is that the policy?
I don't know the policy off the top of my head, I'd have to pull up our health and safety plan, but I can get it to you.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Sure, absolutely. Any other questions?
No, thanks, Patty.
Okay. Thanks, Patty.
Hi, Pat Boyle, 6310 Centennial Station, Newtown Road. The corner of Newtown and Street has been fixed, however, the rest of it's a mess, and the cars are flying down it.
I've already given it, I've already given the report to the chief, haven't I, chief?
So I was just wondering, like, what's the update on anything that's happening with it?
With the speeding traffic?
Yeah.
Well, we're not gonna disclose that, because then...
Then we'll know about it, yes.
Everyone will stop, that's correct.
Well, I drive everybody crazy going 24 miles an hour.
Okay.
Which is fun.
How's, what's, what condition is the road in?
It's in terrible condition.
It's horrible, I was on that the other day.
I know we can't do full blown repairs.
Yeah, I think we mentioned this earlier in the year, excuse me, or last year, pardon me for interrupting, that we were putting it on for 2023.
But if it needs a temporary repair, perhaps we could...
Well, yeah, I mean, I could...
It's gonna get worse with the ice anyhow, so it's kind of like, catch 20s.
Well, we can temporarily repair things, we'll have our public works people come out and patch the bad spots, and maybe we'll make bigger patches so people slow down.
If they patch it, then people will go faster.
Well, it depends on how well you patch it.
That's true too.
Well, Pat, I did, I did pass reports, I have gotten multiple, including you and I, because we travel that, that route too, there are a lot of people that are complaining about it. So I just let you, yeah, so I put it out there.
Thank you.
You look very nice to me.
Oh, thank you.
All right, thank you, Pat. Anyone else?
Good evening, everyone. Bob Welsh, Hallwell Avenue, Wormminster, PA. First, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. And I want to say thank you for the appointment on the zoning hearing board. It's very important to the town, there's a lot of important stuff coming up, I appreciate your confidence.
Thanks, Bob. Bobby, how did we wind up last year? If you don't mind my asking. Not to put you on the spot, but I thought...
I haven't closed out as of yet, because somebody made a credit card payment today. So it looks like there's gonna be maybe 70...
Wow.
People that didn't pay.
That's fantastic.
Trash, I think, is even lower than that.
Right.
So it's, you know, it's gonna be a, a very good year, the residents really do pay their taxes in Wormminster.
Yeah, I know, it's fantastic, and we thank everyone for that.
Yeah.
Without that, we can't function.
I worked all weekend, I was in the office Saturday, people came in, I was in the office Sunday, people came in, I was in the office Monday, and people came in. So, and then I said I had one today, so I have to wait till that hits before I close out.
Okay.
But it looks like it'll be a very good year.
Excellent, excellent.
Thank you.
And thanks to the residents, and thanks for a great job, and, and that's, that's, because without that, we can't function as a municipality.
One of the things I'd like to say to some of the people, there's a certain amount of people that I wrote seven letters to, asking them to please call me. So I've been knocking on doors over the weekend, because some of them were $20, and I was gonna put a lien on them for $20.
Right.
So I went knocking on a couple of doors, and they said to me, "Oh yeah, we got your letters, we just ignored it."
They said that?
Yeah. We have a mortgage company, so we just...
So a lien's worth 20 bucks, huh?
Yeah, we just ignored you, because we have a mortgage company. If I indeed send you a letter, and I say I'm gonna lien your property, please call me, or if I send you a letter saying it's very important that you call my office immediately, please call my office, there's a reason for it. As I said, I went to three houses, the one man owed $15, the other one was $21, and the other one was $25. And they went, "Why would you put a lien on it for that? Because you owe it." They did an addition, or they did something, and it was one month, and, you know, to put a lien on it for that kind of money, I just couldn't do.
So it's important to answer your letters, or phone calls, right?
If I send you a letter, if I send you seven of them, it's really important that you call me. I'm not doing it because I just have nothing to do. I'm doing it to help you to save money.
Right.
So that you don't get a lien, because that $21, we go up to $100.
Right. Yeah, and then you have to satisfy the lien, and it becomes...
And then, with the township the way it is, it affects their credit.
Right.
If it goes to tax claims, it does not, but if it goes to you guys, it affects their credit rating.
Right.
So you don't want to affect your credit for $21.
Not for $21, no, I agree. All right, well, great, well, thanks, thanks very much for your update. All right. Anyone else? Come on up, John.
John Priolius, 674 Joseph Avenue. I'd like to thank the board for considering us for the towing, for the township, and I guarantee you that I won't disappoint you guys.
We know you won't.
I'll make sure it goes right.
You're welcome.
Thanks, John.
Thank you. I know, is it something?
It's awful, isn't it? Do you want us to bring back the old days where everybody, you know? Go out in the parking lot?
Mr. Chairman, isn't awful in government actually works?
Actually functions, yes, it's awful.
It's horrible.
It's horrible, I know. You know. All right, anyone else? Okay. Tom, what are we doing?
Man, I lost my place.
Oh, sorry, here.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. The annual meeting of the Board of Auditors will be tomorrow night, in this very room, at 7:00. Later on this month, on the 25th, at noon, in this very room, we will have a meeting of the Infrastructure Committee, our first for 2023. And they, we meet quarterly, where we come up with ideas on how to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, some of our, our capital projects that we are lucky enough to have some funding on from the state and from the federal government. In fact, what we, at the last meeting, the presentation from Jess and the, the guy that talked about the, the lights for too long. That's one of the candidates, so that's one of the first ones. We already have the bathroom job has been, we've, we've hired a consultant, that was also approved the last board meeting, so there's a couple of these things have legs under them at this point, but we want to keep the momentum going with the Infrastructure Committee. Keep the board informed what's going on, we've already canceled, the meeting was going to be held on Thursday this week, so the next one will be the 19th of January.
And unfortunately, we need to have that, so we will definitely have that meeting. That'll involve some land development, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Tom, is that it?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Yeah, as far as the Infrastructure Committee, you know, we did have that presentation about all the lighting, all the parks and rec are in dire need of lighting, and, you know, we're not going to spend $7 million at once, this will be in a phased, phased, well, that's what happens when you neglect everything, for years, and you just don't pay attention, and, and, you know, we're not, we're not going to do that, we have ARPA money, and we're going to spend it wisely, so we're going to phase, we're going to do some lighting, the football field, and maybe a few other things.
There's an electrical service over at the one field, the football stadium.
That's, yeah, we needed the electrical service, oh yeah, it's from 1940, I was in there, I looked at that, that's.
I coached there like 20 years ago, and my husband and I were afraid to get off that field, we had our little flashlights, because there was, the lighting was so bad, so you're right, we are in very dire need.
Yeah, so we're going to do that over a period of a few years, the way it should be done, and I think we have the Ben Wilson Center, is, the project is underway and ongoing, and I haven't heard any complaints, so I'm assuming it's okay. And what else do we have going on? Oh, Shenandoah Woods. We were thrilled, I don't know if anyone's seen the aerial, the aerials on, that we have on the website?
It's amazing.
What a fantastic job our contractor did there, and, you know, and, and again, I can't say enough for the responsible contractor ordinance to, to, we have, when you go in there to look, you'd never know that there was, there was, it was as blighted as it was. When they would remove those houses, the only thing left was the pad, and a little pile of concrete block and brick, and then that's all gone now, now we're removing the pads, and I can't wait, it's been a long time coming, and our contractor did a fantastic job, I have to say.
I agree.
Well, we'll be moving forward with the actually reclamation, the redevelopment of it, we're going to make that all trails, it's not going to be any type of housing, or halfway houses or anything, in spite of the rumors. It's going to be a wonderful addition to the park, because the upper level is where all the activity is, it's very noisy up there, as well it should be, because that's where all the activity is, and then you can walk down into that little ravine in Shenandoah Woods, and it's going to be all walking trails, it's all going to be all native species plantings, so we'll bring back bird populations, because we are a bird town now, I remember a couple of years ago, when the EAC had that, that drive, it was, we're going to continue to do that. I just can't say enough about that, finally it's happened, and we're thrilled, and, you know, we're very pleased, it'll be a, a great addition for the residents. So, I guess. I would like to. Oh, yeah, yeah, what about the, the money from the Fed, should I announce that too? Yeah, okay, a couple announcements, because I think we're right there now. Yeah, supervisors comment, so. First, I'd like to congratulate Brian Monroe on his swearing in today, and his, and his election, very successful, Brian's a, a, a local person that lives in Warminster, and he will definitely, definitely work hard for the residents here, we're, we're thrilled to have him in, in Harrisburg. And the other thing I'd like to bring up is with the RDA, the redevelopment authority, and, you know, I, I spoke to Brian Fitzpatrick several times, and I'm happy to announce that in the last bill that everyone was complaining about, some people from one party voted for it, well, Brian Fitzpatrick voted for the, the, the funding bill, and in that includes $1.5 million to help us pay for Shenandoah Woods demolition. So, thank you to Brian Fitzpatrick as well. That's the only thing I have left to say. Kathy?
Only comments I have to say tonight is I would like to thank everybody, and I know quite a few are out here in the audience, for volunteering, it's a very noble cause, and you'll get much more out of it than you ever give. So I want to commend everybody that put their names in, anybody else interested in, and wanting to volunteer, please, there's still, still a couple openings, so that's it for me, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I want to wish everyone a happy and healthy New Year, and I know I did privately, but I would like to congratulate Jane Lynch on her appointment as the president of the Centennial School District School Board, and Patty for vice president, so congratulations to you.
Congratulations.
And that's all I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Janice?
Oh, once again, Happy New Year to everyone, the, the weather's changing, it's getting chilly, so we, we will have snow at some point in time, so if that happens between now and our next meeting, please remember to put your basketball poles down, and park your cars in the streets, so it's easier for our guys that are working hard to plow the roads.
Okay, thank you.
Hopefully not anytime soon.
Judy?
I just want to thank everybody for coming and helping to support your board tonight, and I thank you for a great year, where we got a lot done in this year.
We did.
In Warminster, without raising taxes, so I really feel good about that, and I want to wish, past New Years, but have a Happy New Year, and a happy year this year, and that's all.
Yes.
That's a miracle, Judy.
Pardon me?
Should you pass budgets and not raise taxes?
It's a miracle, yeah, you're right.
Well.
Right on the mouths of Jane Lynch.
Quite honestly, Jane.
It came from less spending, and careful spending, and cutting, cutting a lot of corners.
Thank you. I mean, we're, we're the fiduciaries of the township, and we take that very seriously, and that's why we have balanced budgets now for the last three years, where before we did not. They can say, people can say it was a balanced budget, but we are spending surplus money, it's really not balanced. So, and, you know, and I, I want to thank this board, just because government can function, and not be at odds with one another, and this is a classic example of that, so thanks to everyone here. Any other things we can go over now? Mark, I'm sorry. It's all most.
I gotta go.
All right, motion to adjourn.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.